I can open session.
Make a motion to amend the agenda to, uh, for HR recommendations to add Susan Mathis, Dennis Kendrick separate for voting items, if served for restoration.
I have a motion to amend the agenda to add Susan Mathis and Dennis Kendrick to be approved separately. I have a second from Mr. Brown, all in favor. Next agenda item is approval of HR recommendations round number one. I have a motion.
I make a motion.
I have a motion from Ms. Blue.
Second.
Second from Ms. Kendrick, all in favor. unanimous. The next agenda item is to approve Dennis Kendrick, young farmers. I have a motion. I have a motion from Ms. Blue. So, say, say it to Ms. Brown. All in favor. I want extension from Ms. Kendrick. Next agenda item is to approve Susan Mathis, elementary school teacher. I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Brown, or Ms. Blue, I'm sorry. All in favor. I should have four votes yes and one extension from David Mathis. Next agenda item is the approval of the technology equipment. Ms. Thomas.
Sorry, y'all know I'm not supposed to die on me, I'm trying to get back. I shared with you all two documents, one of those is an, or kind of goes with, um, the request that we're making, but you'll see on that narrative, it outlines the COPS grant that we were awarded back in twenty-three, and the fund allocations that were tied to that grant. So, part of the funds to cover badge access in the new middle school, the new middle high, and the current elementary school will come out of that. If you look at the spreadsheet, there are three options there for badge access. So, do the column on the far right does show the price point that we're looking at. If we move forward without product, it's going to add no money. Badge access is currently included under the general contractor, so this is one of those things, if we don't make a decision to pull it out by April the first, we will go with what's listed as option three on that spreadsheet, which is covered for the elementary and would, we would have the other element completely covered within the current elementary school. The only job-
This is a grant that we already have, one of the key-
No, we already have the money for that. If you'll, it's on the new grid, Mr. Ball, that top, this is back in October twenty-three. We've been a COPS application for a school violence prevention, and we're awarded five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Our whole project was fucking ninety-one thousand, but there is a twenty-five percent county match. So, we have, we have money for, for that project. I'm asking that we look at considering another option for badge access, just so that we have everything in a single page. If we have a badge access and a camera system, they're going to say maybe five. When I badge in, you're going to be able to look at that badge log to see my badge was used, but then you're also going to have in that same place camera footage. So, you're not having to go to another application to see that I'm the person that batched in and everything is right there, and that'll be a time-saving thing for everybody.
The only concern I had, um, was cameras in every classroom, I think I saw that. Can you just play your rationale while I was putting cameras in the classroom? Or is that your recommendation of what that is?
That was initially just a for-comps solution for the district, so that we had covered. Since that initial clip was presented to you all, I have continued to investigate and explore other avenues, and I have talked to a district that had the same model cam right in the classroom that was on that original clip, and so because of some, I don't want to say issues, because they did not have any problems, but with the classroom acoustics, audio was not what they preferred. They have since moved to another product as far as classroom cameras, and they really like that. But so the, the pricing that is included on that spreadsheet has no classroom cameras, and, uh, the mass are outlined in recent as I guessed your head. Is that answered? Do you have a question about that? Alright, so with the COPS grant, do anybody have any questions? On that, and this is kind of the area, we budgeted for the middle high school badge access twenty-four thousand, and this parallels with, these are the same vendor. I redacted column B so that we don't see vendors or product managers for safety and security, but these, these two line items. So, this is the price for the middle high, price for the elementary. The issue with the elementary is that we don't have electrified doors, so that's going to cause a little bit more to register that that problem. But this is a funded amount for the grant. We did budget for ten thousand, I heard, and eight dollars to cover the head end, which is cover software, and so this item, the funded amount for the head end here, we deducted the price of that for the forty-eight hundred from the middle high, which left us with the six thousand for the elementary. So, that was the only kind of, kind of gotcha there. But say that, that's the dollar amount, we're looking at about thirteen thousand dollars at a pocket dollar right there for that access to match a camera system. Any questions on that?
Look at the print, it says, "Stop those carriers."
Print was, you know, you must fit the cameras.
As far as in the classrooms specifically, or just in general? I-
Do you think it will help you with your job, or do you think you would have a lot of, we have a lot of, um, problems?
I think there's pros and cons.
Did we have the issue on, uh-
Yes, we had that issue.
No, we're catching it again.
But these, these places do not include any classroom rights.
They don't include them.
Okay, I saw you listen that for the hours, because I wanted to know.
I mean, I'm good if we don't have it. I mean, I, I think obviously we need to have them as entry and all that, and, you know, certain common areas of the school. I don't necessarily think they should be in the classrooms, but, um, I mean.
I know decisions were made. Well, I'm not sure, but anyway, they had the decisions made before that it had some put into the project. And then by doing that, there was a whole, it was a whole lot of problems on that, because, you know.
We don't want to target you.
Yeah.
Right.
Absolutely.
And if print folks and college and, and kind of, like, I'll, we should get.
Yeah, if they're doing their job, like, making sure that if there's problems, being there, listening, coming, bringing them in, talking to them. Yeah, I know, I just want to say that.
Okay, so no cameras in the classrooms are included in what prices. Alright, I'm asking you today to make a decision about intercoms. We do have until April the first to make, well, let me, let me, let me hold up. Let me finish up this badge access and cameras. If we want to keep badge access and cameras together, we need to make a decision, right, the, the current, under the general contractor who's already fully pulling cable to a certain timeframe will come out this day, will recoup the most amount of our money. And a lot of what we have in place, then, we're at the point now where what we already installed can, can move forward with that badge access. But we need to, we need to make that decision by April the first. If no decision is made and a change order issued prior to April the first, we will continue with our product as it stands under the general contractor. Alright, now, I know we've kind of hit on the cameras.
It's option one girl recognition.
Alright, and these are our cameras. Option one, option two, option three. Option one does not, and this is the original clip that you guys saw, that was at three fifty-five. It's going to two ninety-three, and I've got those maps that I can share. And the location, there are not holders that were shared with you earlier this week. We're still waiting on the civic center float to come in. We already have cameras in the school, and it's still going to be a matter of just replacing. There would not be a huge overhead cost with cable as that is already in place. This price does include access control and bank detectors, but those locations are together. Will give you the price in that column. My ask of you today is that we at least pick a vendor, not necessarily a product, and we can continue to negotiate that price and decrease cameras. Yet that price point is a little more than we want to spend, but we do have a GSBA grant on the table for five thousand dollars for cameras that needs to be spent within the next couple of weeks. And obviously, we don't want to buy cameras, but that our current system, if we're going to swap to something else. And make sure that we're getting good stewards and buy what we can move forward.
We do want to-
Then at, then at April.
So, you proposing that we just vote vendor debate, or?
I'm good with just a random camera. If you guys can, can do that, and then we can go ahead and spend the money. The original deadline was the end of March, but because we have these RFPs coming in, we're kind of pushing it close anyway. And so, we had asked for an extension, and that had enough to get us to the end of April. It's, it is five thousand dollars that I've got a couple of cameras, but obviously, no money on the table.
Nice mention, nice mention. That was what Ms. Thomas, number one, that I said. And then cameras.
What does that do to you? I think for, uh, for purpose of record, we need to say, uh, yes. Not specifically, but, I don't know how, I mean, I, what would you recommend?
It's on there, a critical technology equipment, and that's what you're suggesting. So, what are we, what are we really voting on?
STS.
STS.
So, that's what we're voting on.
So, you have to say.
Who has the technology, STS, for something?
I make a mention to the STS for our technology.
Just have a vote from Ms. Blue.
Second.
Thank you, Thomas.
Alright, if we're going with our products and we want to provide access, or do you want to, as we currently said, under the general contractor?
STS also has a budget. That would be an all-inclusive set.
We want to do the, I just said, the, 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 all-inclusive, but then we can give, not, I have it all as different companies, so I could do this.
Are you happy with STS, please, thank you, thank you?
I am. And I did not, I did not mention this, but this is our, this is our, our only, the only quote that I've gotten back yet to relocate cameras, we're looking at forty-five thousand dollars. Back up to the COPS grant, it's like a puzzle. The original door security pieces that were included in that grant are coming in significantly lower than that price because we have original, we have body substitutions, which is great. Mr. Joyner and I are still working on that, but we're projecting, actually, from here up there, y'all, probably a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars left over out of that five hundred and eighty, or five hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollar grant. Mr. Joyner did reach out and has heard back this morning that they are going to let us reallocate those funds. So, out of that original amount that's on the first page, we're going to try to get the bulk of the camera costs covered. So, it looks like COPS grant will cover our badge access, our door, um, protective field, lock mechanisms, whatever the end product there may be, and the bulk of the cameras.
Thank you, thank you.
Alright, few more things. Finally, like, sorry, I'm sorry, for bad news today. Alright, we have to relocate our fiber from the Cunderdale High to the new middle high school. That project's going to cost us twenty-three, or we discussed this back a couple of weeks ago. That will be covered by the state. The company that is doing that, you'll see the price out in, in green, has offered us a price deduction, so that in green will be the new price, if we can go ahead and get them in the buildings to get started on that. So, I'm asking you to approve that. It's an expense we're going to have to pay anyway. They just want to get in here and get the bulk of their work done in the building before the cement house start building. With that, we will also need to move fiber to the civic center and to the Van Halen RC buildings as those are moving forward with us. Those cables now currently come from the five hundred pole of the middle high school and are run on top of that cowwalk, which you guys walk under this one. We're going to have to cut that fiber and extend it, we need it up about four, five, maybe five feet to be able to get cement trucks in there to finish the back board guard area. My recommendation to you is that we not pay four thousand dollars to increase that height so that we can get cement trucks back in here, and then turn around and pay the additional fees here to rewire that fiber. Let's just go ahead and reroute it through here and save us four thousand dollars. Okay, so our recommendation, we do go ahead and move forward with those two fiber systems.
Is that Wiltley doing that, or is that Wiltford?
Um, the, the initial in-rate reimbursement one was awarded that contract through MTC out of Lloyd Robbins, and they currently are our land providers, so they would do that. I have not, I did reach out to, and that is the only price in that eighteen for, for relocating the fiber internally. I did reach out to two other vendors back in February, the thirteenth or fourteenth, and have not been able to get them to come inside, because that was shot. Any questions on fiber relocation? To debate?
Was that, was it allowed to pressure?
So, we good with that, y'all, we need to debate on us relocating fiber? Okay, alright, and we'll proceed with that. Alright, the rest of these are just kind of for, for informational. We're going to have to relocate panels from the existing schools to the new school. That'll require some outside help, and we'll hopefully. The awarded Rust DLT grant, we'll be looking at replacing those items, but, um, the rest of that is just outlined in the, on the paper, and I'll, and any other questions? Alright, the last two things are intercoms. You'll see option one is, is included in the project, and then there are two other options to use. Option one is an analog system, which is what everybody's been using for intercoms for the last third year. It's going to be hard, but it has no fancy features, no, very, very basic. Uh, this is another option you can upgrade, or two, your option three is with the same vendor as option one, but they're going to make from an analog to a full IP, uh, solution. There is going to be a price increase in that. Do you all want to continue forward with analog system, or do you want to look at upgrading that?
That, that will cut into the contingency, uh, what's your-
I don't know if contingency, I don't actually, we did-
That would only have to lose it if it's somebody installed.
Intercoms. I don't know if that can come from contingency.
Well, I guess you would ask, so if it's all included in the general, what's the general contractor's payment? And if we don't go that route, what, how much are they allocating for that from?
They are, this is not their price, but if we make a decision to move forward with another product, we would get this amount here back to us, be that going to contingency or whatever the case may be. Um, but then this, this is the additional amount moving forward with another product.
But isn't that getting better with the Rust DLT?
Yeah, Rust DLT is not including that cost.
For upgrading, as far as making it better, if we can afford it.
Yeah.
Well, when it was brought to our attention, um, that the option one, the one that's included, is a thirty-year-old analog system. That's the one that they were installing, and that's puts in JCI, that's puts in the plan right now. So, if you see the price difference, obviously, the seventy-seven, seventy-eight thousand is an additional cost that it gives us into either the hybrid model, option three is the hybrid model with the same company, or option two would give you one that would give you the different company, um, completely up today. Or with an additional cost.
We have discussed all this with finances. We, we sat there with Mr. Joyner, Jennifer, and Miss Ray, myself, and Ben. Yes, and we did lay everything out to make sure that we could cover it between grants and swaps side.
So, so you really recommend an option?
I recommend that we do an upgrade. At the end of the day, there's not a huge price difference between option two and option three. Option three, I know it shows seven, eight thousand dollars, but that isn't, we don't get this one back with them. So, it's essentially this price plus that seven, eight. So, it's, actually, I think that can all tag it more than option two. Option two is just an intercom system, but if you choose to put networks in the classrooms moving forward, this option two provider has that option. So, that would be a seamless integration, you know, so they get up and out of it. We're not looking at that yet, but it's good.
So, you prefer option, option two?
I do, if you're not going to, but we currently have, I would recommend option two. I'm ready to pass it over, Mr. Ball, you ready? Alright, that will require a change order, um, say, or am I hearing that everybody's good proceeding with option two there?
I'm for it.
Whatever y'all just first to make there.
Is it something we have to do at all today, or can it's too hard?
The change order has to be advanced before April the first, because we're going to get in front of that. Now, this, we can push this out further, but they're going to be, they're going to continue on with this as usual until we're, if they organize. So, what we get back is going to continue to decrease in the amount of product installed that we can't use moving forward or continue to increase. So, that April the first deadline is actually spot.
Well, we just got a mandatory call.
Okay.
But, 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 Mr. Ball, can I ask you a question? So, could, all of this does not fall under the technology?
Well, we, we may, we should be voting on it, but there's no way to reflect the minutes. We don't, so the agenda essentially is minutes. If I'm doing that, we're going to have to wear a report against Florida.
So, before y'all are in, is it one more thing we've got to have on?
PCG.
So.
I think the agenda, uh, for your conferences, uh, for PCG. P, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Right, and we're meeting at one time, and it's at, in our, um.
So, I need a motion for the end of the agenda to have an intercom system and PCG. A motion from Ms. Blue.
Second.
Okay, so, all in favor? Did you raise your hand, Ms. Brown? I'm sorry if I didn't, I think I looked at that to you, but I apologize. So, you have one more thing to discuss?
One more thing, yeah, PC Genesis, we're making a recommendation that you move that to, we moved that to the cloud. We're cross-selling, we're, it's after renewing our backups for that, but we're also going to have to upgrade our equipment and house to sustain upgrades here. The platform is currently under growing. This is our cost for this year, and this is outlined in that narrative to upgrade everything, and then that will be our pricing about every three to four years to keep things current and refreshed. This bottom line item is our price that we just all play back to the cloud. Cloud will give us more flexibility with backups, um, and more security, and their equipment is one to expand, so the more resources we use, the more resources we have available to use.
I'm sorry, I don't know what's on their paperwork, but do y'all understand what PC Genesis is? It is the accounting, house, software, everything we have to do for reporting to the state, and it is, um, it's, it belongs to the state, so. It's all financial records, it's all, yeah. So, and the only other option would be to go with a totally different system, and like UMass and some of the others, and they cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. And what the state gives us through PCG, all we have to do is buy the hardware. Uh, what they give us, it does everything we need it to do, and it's the very cheapest option, because we don't pay for PCG. We actually are paying for only the equipment.
So, so looking at this, option one is TCSS and it's forty-five bucks.
Correct. That is if they're not-
And Yoss, and Yoss is option two, and it's twenty-five bucks.
That's correct.
For the first year, or the first year of-
This, this price is going to be that every three to four years. This is going to be that price every three years.
But if you run your months out, because you, we, they, the state does issue, it's a mandated upgrade that they don't pay for. So, we upgrade three to five years. The best practice would be to upgrade every three years, technology-wise. Um, so it, when we run the numbers out, it really equals out, but it is much safer in the cloud, and we just had two systems right around us. And we just had two systems right around us again within the last three or four weeks that have gotten hit.
Yeah.
And they were not in the cloud. Uh, Terrell?
Let's go.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So, so, y'all work, um, y'all don't know how y'all work, I'm not that technology person, but. So, so what would we vote on, TCSS or YAS?
I recommend to put it in the cloud.
Which is YAS?
Which is, which is YAS.
Right. Right, okay. So option two.
Option two is my recommendation.
And YAS works very closely with DOE, um, with everything they're designing. They, they reach out, there is a lady that's over all the technology at DOE called Diana Holla. And they work very closely with her. So they've got a lot of integration with the DOE and doing other things. And that, of course, is our, our other, um, that's our purchasing order. All of that HR, we do everything else through there, too.
So in terms of the, um, storage in the cloud, so twenty eight thousand, is that built in based off their recommended resources? So for instance, you know.
That is, that is their fee for a district to our size, but they do kind of grow in the virtual field. So your, your resources are going to expand. So if we're running a reporting one, they're, they're going to have that pool of resources available to allocate to us even for that short time that we need it. So it's not, it doesn't require ahead of your left and on the right of your server that you're not going to use it to its full potential all the time.
Well, I mean, so when you go to the cloud, you know, we, this one, because being ten dollar resource makes one thirty four. But that's why we make sure we're not, sometimes when you're hosting the cloud, you know, you have a lot of resources, so we're not living. Most, most times they don't lock you into a fixed rate, it's more of a, it's a flexible kind of thing, because that's how we make sure we're not.
Right, and they're very, they're very good about that. They work with agile environment, that is their, their biggest customer base. And they understand their needs and are building their system to, to meet those needs. And they do that for us three times a day, stored for a year, that's not shot, so it's, it's a good thing.
Do you know how many other schools have some units of that company?
They, they sent that out, yes.
They send us, if you'll look at that, the, the link that I shared with you is their PowerPoint, it's in there. There was several districts, and I can send you the link to the YouTube video if you want to watch their in-depth discussion of it.
And, and the DOE did send a letter out and said, and that's why we were pushing to get it done be- because we've got a deadline to, we've got to, we either have to upgrade what we have now, well, not have to upgrade what we have now, so that it will work with this DOE stuff. So many systems are having to go through this, but there are several systems that are already using YAS. They did say, the one, two things I remember from it, it's like a rubber band. It will expand with us at no extra cost, and the speed of it would, will be greatly appreciated because they said it will make everything much faster, because the reports we send up are huge.
Lot more reports than we used to have.
But we do have about two weeks before we need to seriously consider renewing our backup solution that, that manages that server. And we do have a June thirtieth deadline for upgrading our appliances, our equipment in-house. So obviously, we don't want to make that expense if we're going to move that to the cloud.
Another question, I'd like to approve the intercom system and PCG.
My question.
Motion for this below. Wait, you both, you both spoke of the same thing. Thank you, Thomas. Uh, next is the CTA equipment.
Thank you, everyone. I'm only asking a question about, um, our bridgefield data and our youth science data and student reports and purposes, so I haven't been able to, to look at. Um, this top sheet is the most recent, um, just, it, it came out probably about a week ago, um, of the high demand, um, careers in northern pathways that we offer. This front page includes all the pathways that we offer that's on that high demand career pathway list. And beginning this school year twenty six, we will, um, receive one half comes the points on our CCA credit for each student that completes one of these pathways, um, in our, in our high school. The next stage is, um, what our students are currently taking. Um, our most, um, recommend, or our most requested pathway is the food, um, and nutrition pathway, and it actually ranked number one on the youth science, um, report. And then the other one was our cosmetology or stents, that's, that also ranked number one. Um, but that's, that's through one enrollment, so we don't have quite as many contributing for that particular pathway. The second most requested is audiovisual, um, and that is also where a lot of our kids have shown interest. Um, each of the, um, labs that we requested for the CRE grant are only as high demand as that we see in front of you. Um, speaking with David Turner, he's the program specialist and he's over accountability. Um, I spoke with him earlier this week, and we kind of spoke, seeing as I have any questions, why haven't we processed everything in, 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 in the portal? So I told him, we're waiting on, um, approval, so we recommend that we go with the vendor. We can select the vendors, and they will ultimately, um, approve all of the quotes that were submitted. So that's my recommendation, that we use Southern education solutions, because, um, that is the, the vendor in working with the teachers and working with admin, excuse me, and, um, and our maintenance. All of the, um, all of the benefits that they provide as far as storage, moving in, term, when, when teachers arrive, um, in late June, all they'll have to have is their need to walk into their, their, um, to the labs. They won't have to come in and move anything around, um, they will, it's a complete term key service. They are currently working at Southern Regional, um, they, I met with cosmetology. They're doing their cosmeto, their cosmetology lab at Southern Regional, so it'll be a seamless transition from our high school to Southern, um, uh, I'm sorry, SRTC, Southern Regional, I'm nervous. Um, it'll be a seamless transition from our high school to their labs, since they're doing both labs. And you've seen their work, they've done the labs at Fitzgerald College and Career Academy and the Ignite Academy in, um, America's Georgia, when we did our CCA tour a couple of summers ago. So, um, they're how they recommend about the state, they're familiar with the invoicing process, and that's why we were wanting to be supportive of the vendor, um, for, for our, um, CTA labs.
Want me to give them some background on how the construction related equipment grant?
How the grant funds come from and what. The construction related grant is bond money. Um, if we don't go ahead and, and submit our request pretty soon, it goes late June thirty. We have until, until July, um, thirty first, um, to submit our invoices. But if we don't use that money, then everything will fall on the local budget. Um, everything would have to cost over a hundred dollars in the code, and that's why they're, they like to use Southern, um, um, education solutions, because every year everything was in process. They know how to prepare the invoices and whatnot, so that they, um, need a guideline for the bond, that it's, it's bond money that we're using.
So the grant funds are covered in the supplies.
Yes.
No local fund, I'm not asking for any local money.
Also, afford it, did you find out?
No, we couldn't afford it.
I do have a problem, we closed the technical equipment list, and I know this proposal is putting it in industry certification.
Yes.
We do not have to be industry certified.
Um, and speaking with David Turner, he said that I have to put in a date. When we submit the grant, there is a date here that I have to put in for industry certification. It's five years from the date that can apply for the money. So David Turner said, kind of middle of the specialists, as he says, we do. But knowing that, um, our, our circumstances here in Turner County, he has gave me permission to apply for at least one industry certification within five years. And which pathway that is, it'll have to be our strongest pathway, so we'll revisit that, and he has given us grace for that. And so has Julie Kenny, um, next monitoring risk assessment, um, they're allowing us grace, because I have to put in industry certification for every pathway that we apply for. That's in the portal, um, that, um, and, um, it is in the portal that I have to request the money from.
So, I'm hearing you correctly, we use local funds, and though we're dealing with.
I, I talked with the, like, the ag ed, I talked with him, he said, no, it is recommended. We don't have room for all this stuff that you've got on here. If you look at the, the blueprint, there's no room for it, there's no need for it.
And the vendor will work with our builders, that's why we need to get the vendor approved, so he can come in and finalize all of our lists.
I don't, I don't, I don't see it. Okay, I, I, I would like, I would like an explanation, okay, when you put down, okay, we get five hundred and sixteen thousand dollars from that construction grant, capital equipment grant. Okay, we, we're going to spend a hundred and thirty seven thousand, or thirty eight thousand, a hundred and thirty eight thousand on greenhouses. That, it goes under the ag construction.
Correct.
Okay. That leaves ninety thousand.
Correct.
Okay, when you look at, um, all this stuff you've got here on these lists, that doesn't, um, I mean, that, that leaves what, fifty thousand dollars, something like that, if you buy all that stuff? We don't have a place for all this stuff.
And we don't like to store it.
And, and, and like I said, when I talked with Stacy Beach, who is an ag ed area person, and I'll call Billy Hughes if I have to, um, he says, no, you don't have to have all that stuff, because you don't have to be industry certified. Industry certified, that certification takes several years. It, and, and it follows the teacher, it don't follow the school.
Correct.
So, you know, um.
And that's why we're going to pick the strongest pathway that has the most ability.
Was to get the money, you have to work towards it. That, I'm hearing you correctly.
That is correct.
So you spent all money, and you do that.
So are you saying that we're going to order all this stuff?
Probably not, because I'm hearing, um, we, we need to order welding, welders, so that list will change.
Okay, let me take this. Minister's told me this, just found out. Um, ag, uh, air gas is, is giving them a ten thousand dollar grant.
Okay, great.
I know welders and things like that, if you purchase for that. That was something that was nominated, air gas nominated, a school, and then nominated to us. And, um, he just found out that, that call, he said that they were going to get it. So, um, that will take care of some stuff. But, um, I can't see buying twenty five shovels at eighty dollars a piece. I mean, some of these prices are ridiculous to wonder. But, um, also on the family and consumer science. She only, we, we, we build a food slab, food slab. Why don't we need sewing machines? Why don't we need interior design?
And speaking with, um, her FCC LA advisor, Erenick, and materials can be purchased to help her complete her program. Um, that's competitions for our students. But again, they will finalize this, we won't, we won't finalize all of this. I'm asking for approval to move forward with the vendor, such that the state can go through, because the equipment will belong to the state for the next five years.
Will these vendors, will this vendor, SES, will you purchase some Redman equipment? Will you purchase, um, how many, will you use Redman equipment? Uh, will we use, uh, you know?
It's for the state to determine that. I'm wanting to use the vendor so we can move forward, because if we don't apply or approve the vendor, then we will risk of not benefiting from the money. Um, and then it'll be local funds to help finish out, um, outfitting our labs.
So today, if I'm understanding correctly, you're not asking us to approve any new items?
No, the vendor, yes.
Because they have to.
So they can, you can take up those sewing machines and those sixty something dollars, seventy dollars.
The big reason is that that's the part that we're here.
Mr. Ball, would that be sold to you?
But that, 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 that list will be altered.
It can be altered, yes. What, it can be, or will it? It will be.
Well, as I told Mr. Thomas, that's what we paid you for. I'll make a motion if anybody's, uh, I don't know who's standing by this. I'll make the motion to.
Wait, wait a minute, let me ask you one more question.
Yes.
Okay, who, who decides which pathways? Now, where's this pathway? Like, like you had, like, there was turf grass and everything, you had mowers and, and weeders and everything in that business. What pathway is that? Uh, 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 is it plant science, is it turf grass, is it?
The list I was turning in was for the horticulture pathway, which can be used for multiple pathways and add that material.
Yes, I can see it.
The cluster would be the agricultural food and natural resources is the cluster that it falls on.
Is it what?
The agricultural food and natural resources is the cluster that that pathway, and it lets that.
I, I, I don't see, you know, horticulture, plant.
Horticultural management, right over that, or for, during the same.
I'm going to take this first, and she said it. Um, I, I, I can, whatever. I thought we needed to look at pathways, you know.
How do we plan on every part of this stuff? Um, because things will disappear, they'll, they'll never do that. They come and they involve this and that, and then it disappears and goes somewhere and we never find it.
Absolutely, uh, that was in our monitoring risk assessments, uh, and worked with Ms. Thomas to get this catalog as far as technology. And at the end of every school year, teachers have, at beginning of the end, they have to submit their inventory sheets. This particular company will prepare, will prepare a notebook that has everything, um, itemized in detail, and teachers will be responsible for checking it all and sending the reports every year before they leave for the school year.
Good cause.
Yes. One thing too is, um, manufacturing. Why don't we equip the manufacturing, why don't we have to equip Southern Regionals teachers? That, that, it's like the cosmetology, I don't see why we have to do that.
Because they serve our students, and that's why we're in this our building, and that's why we're equipped.
You know, one, one day, and you might decide, we're the whole cosmetology. You know?
That is true.
Then we start with the building, uh, a room this.
And then we can do a surplus sale after five years if we decide to disband, to disband the pathway.
Well, actually, cosmetology, that's a great example, we've already real, reallocated that classroom. When the plans were approved, which would have been probably two thousand and nineteen for the new deal, there was a lab space for cosmetology and an additional classroom space. So about a third of that hallway for CTA is cosmetology. So our smallest pathway, um, at the time, seven students, had the largest number of square footage on that hallway.
I saw that.
And so one of the things I asked them to do, and we've already had the general contractors change, is we had a doorway built from the hallway into that classroom, so you now could access, access that classroom.
I, I, so I'm, I'm.
So that's just an example of how we've made changes when we're saying.
I made a motion to approve the CTA, uh, CCA, and we're not approving any list.
Right.
You say SES.
Whatever, whatever. Yeah, SES.
So I'm motion, just pause to approve the vendor, uh, the SES, I'm saying. All the papers are in hands. Any moves? Oh, yes. Next agenda item is the, uh, giving the GSPA training, I believe it is Thursday.
Thursday, nine to ten, for five thirty, thirty thirty. It's like, some team left, it looks like.
Lucy's, you can't do so.
I'm not going to do that.
Can't do all that. I can't do whole records with you.
But there is, I got a ten, Paul, surprise, you guys.
No, well, we're not gonna be credit, so.
Well, and, but actually, the last training, you had a big counting, I think Mr. Mathis wasn't able to attend, so we need to get the whole board, but you got the individual.
Right, we need a whole.
So it's just in our recording.
Will, will that be recorded?
I think we might decide to infall, and next is, I'm, I'm, I'm speculating, I don't know.
I just didn't wanna do anything, if we didn't have anybody to jeopardize the possible rewards and, or recommendations, it would become like.
We, we just gotta, we gotta do our whole, we gotta have a whole board training.
And that's something I can schedule the in-house, if that's something that we can look at.
Yeah.
We gotta be getting the. Okay.
And what, well, did, when, when did Steve will need a contract, because that counted as.
That was a home for training, that was in July.
Was that last, FY?
That was in July, so that would have been this, this.
So we're covering, that, that, we're covering for whole.
I've already got that on record, it just wasn't part of that original plan, we just didn't approve of it.
Well, that, that's flexible.
All right, then I'm making sure that that credit is applied and.
That's, we need the pre-order, and that game is pre-order.
We were there, we're there, happy to.
Next agenda item is the new building plaque revisions, and we will see, you know, Mr. Ray and I did have a brief, long conversation, uh, last week, and his was. Second thing to that, to, um, obviously change the, the names, um, change the title, the names there, um. And then to possibly add something in, um. Some sort of things, or, and put note, something, uh, to the commercial bank news, since it was here to help begin this project.
I think it's better if you can comment.
I think just put his name and put it in here.
I've already said the revisions that we discussed, and they haven't sent back any other models, so as soon as they do, I'll share that with y'all.
Okay. And then, next agenda item is the approval of the little school FFS convention field trip.
That should be an A.
Okay, FF eight. FF eight convention field trip, September twenty-fourth to twenty-sixth, I'd like to approve.
It's, it, you guys said it's driving.
Uh, right now, it says, hey, I've got a hard time with the shore, and she said she would be on the drive, okay? So it's forced, it's, it's handy.
I'd like to approve. Y'all always, uh, thank you from Mr. Brian and all the things. Again, just thank y'all for joining us.